Good evening, this is Tuesday, April 14th. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2015 Special Meeting Budget Workshop. By Lisa, second by Deirdre. Any discussion? All who's in favor? We have, um...
(inaudible)
Lyon, Schilken, Rosenthal, Lyshower, Del Bear, Walker. One abstention. Burns. And so, that motion passes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 24th, 2015 Regular Meeting.
(inaudible)
By Lisa. Any discussion? All who's in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, move on to principals' reports. Gentlemen.
I close without saying, but I'll say it anyway. The High School Musical, Anything Goes, opens Friday, 8 o'clock, three shows, 8:00 PM Friday, Saturday, 2:00 PM Monday, Sunday. Promises to be another wonderful performance. Our English department is sponsoring a performance of Macbeth in self-control beats given by the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Company for all of our students. So with Mr. Cam's cooperation, we're going to carve out some time at the end of the day and all of our students, time to dwell, to enjoy a performance of Macbeth, modern setting, original language, of course. All of our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders have already read Macbeth, they know Macbeth. Our 9th graders have not yet, but in consultation with their department chairs and our English teachers, thought it'd be a great experience to encounter Shakespeare in the form in which he was intended. So they'll have, they'll see, our 9th graders will see Macbeth, the next year they'll read it. In addition, thanks to the work of one of our students, our English department, over the next several weeks, we're planning to host a presentation by Holocaust survivors for our four students moving forward to that presentation as well. Our art, music departments are art, departments planning two field trips. Tomorrow, our painting classes will then be visiting Arnett Paints in Kingston to learn about incaistic paints, which I understand is one of the oldest methods of applying paint onto material. And a little bit later this month, 50 of our students will travel to the Museum of Modern Art in Manhattan for a field trip. In physical education, our students have been doing a new rollerblading unit. Now they're currently refreshing their skills to floor hockey, and in a couple of weeks, if you put it all together, we're going to be playing roller hockey in our school. Rollerblading's a new unit, unanimously enjoyed, supported by our students in physical education. Looking a little further ahead, when we administer AP exam, 109 of our students will be taking 174 advanced placement exams in high school. And 109 students, obviously, is over 4 of our students. I think that's a testament to our KP-12 system, to the hard work of student support families and the support of districts that call our students to block those exams. This year, we will have three students attending Skills USA Contest in Syracuse, New York. Skills USA is a competition for the best career technical students in the state and nation. They compete in different areas on specific projects, and their performances are adjudicated by professionals in that field. As you may recall, last year, we sent two students from CTI to the Skills USA. This year, we're sending three students, so that's a, that's another trend. Can we really send in terms of the seniors, we probably have, you know, 12 or so, between 12 and 15 students, a total, who go to the Career Technical Institute. So out of that number, to send two or three students is an excellent proportion. We'll be administering SAT on May 2nd. We have a band concert on May 5th, a choral concert on May 21st, and I'm getting really far ahead of myself, but I can't end without saying on May 22nd, we have our junior, senior prom. That's what takes place at Christos. And once again, with some of our school resource officers, the week leading up to prom, we'll have some presentations on safe driving, presentations on the importance of wearing the seatbelt, and not texting while driving. So that's both for the prom, and we have some other playmates, our students will remain safe. Update on the high school.
Questions for Dr. Davenport? Deirdre?
May not a question, but a comment. I went, accompanied a teen driver to the safe-driving event the other night in order to obtain a parking permit, and I just, again, wanted to say publicly what a tremendous program that is, and how important the testimonials of community members who volunteer their time to come and speak to young drivers is, and really what an outstanding program it is that you have in place there, so.
This is, thank you, this is, I think, the ninth or 10th year that we've partnered with the Career Council on Divisionary Prevention and Education to offer this information to our students. And I have to say, very powerful and very important presentation. Always happy to host them and work with them.
How many students do we have participating in the musical this year?
I don't have an exact number off the top of my head. Typically, that was about, almost a quarter, you know, at least 20 percent of our students are participating in musical, both, you know, onstage, behind the scenes. As you know, our, our classes gets into the act in terms of producing advertisements and publicity. So I'll have to talk to our director for a harder number.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Davenport? Okay.
I begin this evening by mentioning that three more BMS students were recognized in the Catching Kids Carrying Program just last week. I've mentioned this to you on several occasions, this is the third such presentation that we've done this year. We'll have one more, it's a quarterly award that we're presenting. I haven't really publicized this program, I haven't publicized this to parents, I haven't publicized this to students, because I think that really defeats the purpose of recognizing students that demonstrate positive character, demonstrate leadership amongst their peers, simply because it's the right thing to do. But I did want to point out, after having presented this, these awards three times now this year, that the parents of, and the students that have been selected thus far in the school year, the feedback has been, has been amazing. I really want to thank, once again, the Kiwanis Club, who sponsors this program. Their sponsors that provide the funding for the gift certificates that are provided to the students, as well as on-line books. We look forward to continuing that program and to continue recognizing our students. As you know, the state testing began this morning with the first of three days for our ELA assessment. This will be followed by math next Wednesday through Friday, and then the science assessment for our 8th grade students later, in late May and early June. Thanks again to Dr. Davenport, you know, we've taken a number of steps, as we do each year, to create an optimal testing environment for our students. Following the final day of math testing next Friday, BMS is going to hold a kind of a fun event to celebrate the, the end of the testing and the end of the week, but we're going to hold our first, first ever World Cup Soccer Tournament. We're going to have soccer tournaments in both a competitive and a recreational division, and that is followed up that evening by a sprint dance. So students are preparing for that, and they're excited about it. Next week, our 8th grade students begin their study of Shakespeare, as they've done in the past, thanks to a grant from the Arts and Ed Committee. They're going to have, our students are going to have the opportunity to work with performers once again for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Project. After a one-year hiatus, our 8th grade students are going to be creating their own version of Romeo and Juliet, and will once again this year be presenting that to the 5th grade classes over at Chancellor on June 9th. Ms. Cake wanted to make sure that I extend the invitation to all of you, she does to parents each year, but wanted to be extending invitation to members of the Board of Education to attend any of the sessions, the workshops, workshop sessions, that the Shakespeare performers conduct with our students. And that takes place every Friday throughout the month of May, so all are welcome to attend. Coming up in May, 7th and 8th grade DAR members will be traveling to New York City to view a performance of the Casey Nicolau musical, Something Rotten. For the third year, 7th grade students will participate in the walking history tour. I know I've mentioned that to this group before, it's a fantastic event each year, it continues to grow. Through the hard work of Henry Frischkinett, Pat Sexton, Martin Fias, members of the Rhinebeck Historical Society, local chapters of the DAR, and historians from the Beating Arms, Post Office, and Industrial Forum Church, the event has proven to be a great success in the past. Students will have the opportunity to learn about the history of Rhinebeck, from pre-revolutionary war through civil war and on to today, through a variety of hands-on activities at five locations throughout town. The Beating Arms, the Post Office, they'll be working in archives of the Rhinebeck Historical Society, at the Star Library, the DAR House, and Industrial Forum Church. One of the things that Mr. Frischkinett has been working very closely with a number of artisans and craft people in the, in the area to expand, years past, one of the activities that students have done have been to work with, you know, artisans from the day, cobblers and blacksmiths, and they learned how to churn butter, they learned how to weave using spinning aluminum. So I know that that's, that's one of the activities that they're looking to expand even further this year than they have in the past. And finally, as you know, this really is conjunction, in conjunction with the walking history tour. You know that a program we call Water Days has always been a kind of a tradition at both the middle school, and it's been the cultivating activity that we use to top off the ecology unit that our 7th grade students conduct each year. In the past years, we've worked with Lori Pointe, that's your research center. This year, we're going to try something a little new, we're excited about it. This year, we're looking to participate in the Clearwater Shoreside Program, which is conducted over at the Aesopus Meadows Environment Center over in Moser Park. Students will explore the Hudson River through hands-on, experiential learning. They'll spend the day sanding the Hudson River, catching, identifying, classifying fish and divertards, using tide charts to map out the river in the Rhinebeck area, as well as conducting water quality assessments. We're looking forward to that coming at the end of May. Do the activities we've got to come up with.
Lisa?
I just wanted to say that if you really want to switch it up next time, you should go first or last.
Diane?
I'm wondering, I know it's only day one, but if you have any feedback on the state tests, how they went, timing of them, anything?
I had little anecdotal feedback. I know that we had one student at the 6th grade level that was unable to complete the test, and the time was allotted for her to take it. Aside from that, in terms of, you know, I know we've talked about the length of the assessment before, I don't necessarily know that that was a problem. But I don't, I haven't gathered a lot of, a lot of evidence or info, information from my teacher.
Deirdre?
How long is the ELA test taking? How many hours, like today, how long?
The ELA assessment is given over three days. The testing time allotted is 90 minutes each day, with an additional 10 minutes for directions, so it's 100 minutes per day.
Okay. And so there were a number of kids who did not take the test?
Correct.
And so, what were those numbers, or something like how many during the day? Or I know Joe had emailed them, I just hadn't really checked.
In the middle school, we had 47 students refuse to take the state assessment today. That's out of 270 students, so I think that's about 18 percent.
And, and so, did you provide alternative work for them to do?
They were provided with an alternative space, and they, they required spaces.
Right, okay. So the test is three days. So, you know, next time, it'd be interesting to see, and then how, the math tests are how long?
The math tests, I believe, are the same, 90 minutes plus 10 minutes for instructions on two out of the three days. The third day is slightly shorter, eight minutes plus an additional.
Over six, so 100 minutes over six days, basically. Okay, so maybe when our next principal's report, you can give us some feedback on how all that went.
Sure.
And I, I guess, well, I was just going to follow up, like, I think the idea of having a Friday activity, World Cup Soccer Tournament, Sprint Dance is great under any circumstances, honestly, but I guess I just, you know, one of the things I worry about is it speaks to perhaps the intensity of the testing, if it's characterized as, yay, the tests are over. So I'd have to process that more in my own head, and I'm sure you guys are as well, kind of, you know, when you say they're not a big deal, but then if they need, like, a big activity afterwards to decompress, then, then maybe it isn't a big deal that we should be concerned about, you know, so.
Diane?
I think in your, you typically talk to the parents of the students that are refusing the tests, you know, about what will happen, is that correct?
In most cases, yes. Unfortunately, that was not the case with all parents. I had 17 students, our parents of 17 students that did indicate their intentions were refused to take the test until this morning, right before the test. So that would be difficult, but I have written documentation on each of those students, I've spoken to most.
And, I mean, do you have a sense of, like, why they're not refusing to take tests? Is it political reason or about the test? I mean, is there, is there any kind of common reason?
You know, it runs the game, and I think that's the reason for, for some. I think the idea that, you know, it's creating a lot of anxiety in their, in their children, I'd say that is probably, you know, one of the main factors as well.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kim, sir? Okay, thank you.
A few things, I did have an update. We did nail down a date for the send lab visitation. There's a group from Dvitaq and another school district possibly, that will come on May 12th to, to visit our school, and I'll be able to free up David's work with me with the schedules, so he can sit with the group afterwards along with myself to debrief. So I just wanted to give you that update, since the last time I was able to nail down a date. A couple of things, as John said, the 3-5 ELA assessments for these three days today, they're going to be tomorrow and Thursday. Math will be next week. About 19 students in my building, 3 through 5 refuse to take the test. Next week, April 21st through 24th, thanks for the Arts and Ed Grant, for the second year in a row, first grade classes will be drawn by a woman by the name Jill Schwartz, as they learn about and appreciate different cultures and their tradition, which is a big part of the social studies curriculum. We actually do a lot of that early on in the year, and this is a great time to kind of revisit with those students, especially with first grade, since they mentioned the testing. We do kind of switch around our master schedule, so for first grade, they're one of the only grades, along with 3rd, who instead of only flip-flop specials, they flip-flop lunch and specials. So it creates a different stretch of the day, so this is kind of a nice thing for them to all be. So for those days, they'll, they'll be working with Jill. In addition, she uses music, dance, and literature, which will be the idea of pattern development, so there's a math connection as well. And like I said, great time to do it, just a timeframe, it's a revisit, but also visit the schedule for first graders, some of the younger students in our building. Also wanted to mention, this past Friday last week, grade 5 had their expo, we do that every year, and there's always kind of little changes and upgrades and things like that that we do. This year, grade 5 students celebrated their presentations on States of the Union, and grade 4 students toured the classrooms for, at one point in the day, they kind of finished up with anyone in the building who was available, including the administrators, and parents came to enjoy the exhibitions there. So I would say we moved around all three classes, really standing room only. Students get a really great opportunity to teach us what they learned. So that was a big event on Friday. I wanted to let you know, on the 24th of this month, from 6:00 to 7:30, we'll be doing a family fitness night, another great event organized by the CLSP department. By the way, Mr. Yornell watched the YouTube feed and is now aware that you want to put together a tangents.
(laughing) I don't even know a tangent, honestly.
He'll be soliciting.
(inaudible).
I told you, you can put it out there.
Do we first have a lesson?
Say again.
Do we have a lesson first?
Absolutely.
YouTube it.
Yeah, absolutely. PTS is planning their annual CLS staff appreciation day on the 28th. We always appreciate that. Favorite Character Day, the last of the school spirit initiative, actually, I think we have one more in June. School Spirit Initiative from GLPT will be on the 8th of May. As I mentioned before, still planning, but sometime in May, grades 2 through 5 will go through Engineers Week, we have IBMers come and work with the students, really high interest activities. And Special Friends Day is on May 22nd, with parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon. Entries, student entries for the PIN contest that we have every year are in, it was, they would do on Friday, so it's Johnson and I will go about selecting the winner. I don't know if I've ever mentioned it before, but we always have the students put their names on the back in pencil, so we can't see who they are, and we can basically go just by the pins. Not claiming we'd be biased, but we just figured it's the best way to do it. So we'll be, we'll have a winner soon, and then get those out, so that's what's happening at CLS.
All right. Questions for Mr. King? Diane?
I would ask you the same question about the state test, if you have any feedback, and...
Yeah, assuming the job a little early, so I haven't had too much anecdotal. I do know, we did have, from what I understand, 3rd grade, which is, we had about four students who weren't able to finish the test. As far as I could see, because I am the testing coordinator, so just organizing the tests, that seemed to be the only grade we seem to have a good issue. For us, it's, I think the time was appropriate, and maybe those four students just had a tough time with it. And the timeframe, 3rd grade is 70 minutes, 4th grade is 70 minutes, 5th grade is 90 minutes, so obviously we kind of ramble on that timeframe out of our building into the middle school. I don't know off the top of my head, it's probably the same type of structure for the math, I haven't actually looked at the official timeframe for that, but it's usually pretty comparable.
Other questions?
I'd just like to share an anecdote about, about the Chancellor PE staff. I was, I was at my desk yesterday afternoon, 5:30 or so, you know, kind of later than most teachers are, are hanging around here, although there are some exceptions, and I got an email from, from Mr. Yornell, telling me about this, this Get Moving grant, that they had done a, a video of kids doing some physical activity, and they had submitted it to NICEAferd as part of some kind of a grant competition, and, you know, would you, you know, could you do anything to, to spread the word about this? It ends on the 23rd, and we need as many votes as we can, and what ensued from that was about 15 minutes of the most manic back and forth via, via email that I've had in a long time, so, because he's, I'm asking him questions back, I'm posting it on, on our website while I'm talking to him, he's giving me information back, we're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I said, okay, fine, it's up, I said, I'll get it out on, on the Twitter feed, oh, that'd be great, then he emails me back, he says, just, he says, I feel bad about this, but you, you spelled my name with a lowercase y instead of a capital Y. Sorry to be picky about this, so of course, I said, you know, you shouldn't be picky about, I go back in, I change it. It was like, after 15 minutes with him, I was exhausted. I really was, but that said, I do appreciate that enthusiasm, because those guys show a ton of enthusiasm, it's all about the kids, and they're doing some great stuff over there, so I, it's a pleasure to do whatever we can do to, to support them. So I just share that with you, and when you see Kevin tomorrow, you can tell him he totally wore me out yesterday.
All right, he does that to me, too, actually. He's got a running club.
It's like the Energizer Buddy.
Yeah, every day he goes running with a group of staff, and it's different staff, he does the, him specifically, he also does the, like, after-school calisthenics, on Mondays with a group of staff, so I agree. He's got a lot of energy.
So if you haven't heard about this yet, go on the website, go on the Twitter feed. My, my tagline is vote early and vote often, because apparently you can vote as many times as you want for this, so, well, you know, you draw your own conclusions, but in this particular competition, vote early and vote often makes sense, so.
I voted.
Their thing is jump roping in the, in the form of CLS, and he was up on the ladder, and the kids are already like 6'5" anyways. So it is a cool video, you know, and it's actually, I'm glad you mentioned, because that actually, that should have been, that could have been something I could have reported. And we'll see, yeah, the deadline's coming soon, so. Yeah, I think it was a little, they put the link up a little late, that's actually created a bit of a, of a rush to, yeah, we'll see.
All right, other questions for Mr. King? Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask if you gentlemen would stay for the, the budget discussion that's coming up very shortly, in case there's any questions. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the 2015-16 Budget Underdevelopment.
Okay, so lots happened since we met last, and having done, I've done much of this work from my smartphone in the front seat of the car while my wife drove on this, this road trip down south, was, was very interesting, but we got it done. I had, Tom was holding the fort down here, and he was a great help, because I can't read those little state aid runs hardly in person, much less on my smartphone. But anyway, we, for better or for worse, we did have a state budget almost before April 1st. I understand it was a few hours late, but I'm sure the governor is, is putting another notch in his belt for an on-time budget. To, to cut to the, to the chase, because of some restoration of gap elimination adjustment aid, we will be the beneficiaries of about $120,000 more in state aid than we knew what we would be getting when we started this budget development process. As you know, we had initially started the process by holding state aid flat, given some of the threats that were coming out of the, the governor's office earlier on in the, in the process. During that period of time, we did do some of our own calculations internally to estimate what we thought our excess cost aid was going to be. We'd talked earlier in the process about the spike in special education costs that we experienced this year, so we knew we would be getting some of that expense-driven aid back in the coming year. It's not reflected, I don't think, or at least not fully, in those state aid runs, but we know we're going to be getting it, so we did budget conservatively, but we budgeted for a sum of money for that, and with the addition of the, about $120,000 in the gap elimination aid, that helped us some. You remember at our last meeting, at our budget workshop, we had a gap of about $300,000 to make up from where we were to getting to the tax levy limit amount, which was our goal when we started the process. So chipping away at that by $120,000 left us with $180,000 gap after the, the smoke had cleared from the state aid stuff going on in Albany. As, as a side note, I would just remind you, at least if what, if what you read in the papers is, you know, is, is accurate, at least in this case, apparently, the, our, receiving our aid this year is going to be premised on our ability to negotiate this new APPR, which of course hasn't even been developed yet by our friends at the State Education Department. So again, you know, our governor has seen fit to, to attach some strings to money that, that rightfully should be ours, so we're, we're budgeting for it, we're planning on it, we're being optimistic that we'll be able to do what we need to do to, to access that, but, you know, it's another little asterisk on the, on the corner of the ledger like we had a few years ago, so just, just in the interest of full disclosure, everybody realizes that we'll do our best to, to make that, to meet that goal. So what we did at that point was, and we, really being, being the two men in the room, we, we sat down to look at our gap and look at the potential cuts that we had identified in the event that we had to make up the entire $300,000 of the gap. At that point, we really didn't know. We also went back and revisited... We also went back and revisited the list of proposed additions to the budget that we had generated a long time ago, back in November. As it turns out, if you revisit that list sometime in your leisure, you notice that a number of the things, not all of them certainly, but a number of the things that were on that list, we actually addressed through the modification of our technology plan, for example. So without doing it to add to the budget, we actually did address some of those issues. But there were a number of things that we didn't address. So essentially, our plan that we're bringing you this evening for your discussion and approval in order to make up that gap of $180,000 would be to trim the items that were on our list of tier-one cuts. The two biggest items I would bring to your attention and remind you was a placeholder for an elementary school position should enrollment dictate a need for that. So we're proposing that we take that out of the budget at this point. There is also a reduction in staffing costs by going, in the middle school, going to four sections per grade level in the core courses instead of five, due to the fact that we have a very small fifth grade class moving over to sixth grade this year. That will allow us to do some shuffling and reassignment, but ultimately will result in our deleting a part-time ELA/ AIS teaching position in the middle school, which will save some money for us. There are some smaller items on that list, which you should have in front of you. In addition, we had budgeted $13,500, which represented one year of a three-year lease to replace the computers and update the computer lab in the middle school. We have, some members of our staff, Mr. Krebs in particular, and Mr. Jensen, have had some discussions with our benefactors from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation. And it looks like there will be a, bush, a pretty good opportunity to partner with them in updating that lab through a grant, which has not been submitted, much less approved. But those discussions have already started. And that will enable us to do things, two things, not only to update that lab, but also to do it in a way that if we have grant monies to make the purchase of that equipment outright is a much better chance, depending on the timing, that we'll be able to have those machines in and in operation by the beginning of the school year. If we go through a lease purchase, that process is such, it involves two different BOSIs, the Duchess BOSIs and Nassau BOSIs or Suffolk BOSIs, that realistically, even if we would decide to do that today, it would be months before they'd actually ship the equipment. So that's one way we'll, we'd be able to trim that gap some. By doing so, we actually would be, we would be freeing up about, about $40,000. Tom, you probably have the exact figure.
I should have it right here.
Yeah, we would have about $44,000 that we are proposing allocating towards two things. Number one, towards hiring a .4 AIS mathematics teacher for chancellor, which would allow the teacher who is currently the part-time math AIS teacher at chancellor and also the half-time STEM teacher at chancellor to be dedicated completely to STEM. So we would, that would allow us to increase that STEM position from half-time to full-time. And .4 FTE math AIS, Brett and I have had a discussion about that. We feel that that likely will meet our math AIS needs. In addition to Kathy Barpulis, who's more recently a full-time math AIS person and a resource there. So we think that'll be able to let us increase the STEM program to full-time, which is one of the things that was on our wish list that not too long ago, we had pretty much written off because of the unknowns of the state budget process. And it will also free up around $8,000 that, at this point, we would propose we use to fund some of the clubs at the secondary level that we've been getting requests from students for. It won't fund everything, but it'll fund at least some of that. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that, kind of as a follow-up to some of our conversations at the board budget workshop and in particular with some of Brett's comments and discussions that we've had since then, should we, should the numbers dictate that we, we're in need of another elementary school teacher? And the numbers we're looking at are probably kindergarten numbers. We don't, they've climbed somewhat since three weeks or so ago at that meeting. They're still not up to where we would consider even having a discussion about needing another section of kindergarten. But I think Brett's point at our workshop was well-taken. We need to at least have a backup plan in case that comes to fruition. And at that point, we would start to take a look at those tier-one cuts, which you'll remember did not impact staff. And for the most part, not completely, but for the most part, that tier-two list was nibbling at a lot of different areas, you know, taking $500 from this line item, $1,000 from this line item, in rare cases, zeroing out line items. So we think that should we find ourselves in the position of having to have a discussion about the possibility of adding staff at chancellor, we at least have a backup plan. We know where we'd go next. So that's our proposal to you for how to get our budget down to the tax levy cap without, we feel, without harming our programs and services and in fact, in some areas, to actually enhance our programs and services. So at this point, we put that out on the table for your consideration in terms of our timeline, just to put a context to this discussion. I would like to, if at all possible, I would like to, I like a lot of things, but I really would like to walk out of this door tonight with an understanding that there's a consensus of the board, that either this plan or some other alternative that we might discuss this evening is where we're going to go when we present a final budget for board approval at our own budget hearing next Tuesday at 7:00 PM. And then at the special meeting next Tuesday at 7:30 PM, we would vote that budget, which is, again, for everybody's recollection, we're voting an amount of money, not specific line items to purchase, but an amount of money that by our calculations will be at or just below the tax levy cap. And that's what would go on the proposition that goes to the voters on May 19.
Lisa?
Joe, I want to thank you and Tom very much for the result of this very difficult, fractured process. I'm very relieved, honestly, that we're going to be able to have a budget that won't negatively impact the program that the district delivers to the students. I would like to know what the overall percentage increase in out of state aid was, because there've been, in the press, there've been numbers bandied around, and I want to know what the impact was for Rhinebeck.
In terms of percentage?
Sure, in terms of the percentages.
Well, it's kind of hard to tell because the numbers are always changing, even, and this is the one thing a lot of people don't realize. The snapshot they show from last year, the current year we're in, that's always changing too. So what was in last year's budget to us is already different. So when they show numbers, they're not comparing, this was your budget last year and now this is what it is. They're looking at it, these are your calculated aids now, and this is what they're going to be next year. So it's really kind of difficult. But really, in essence, it was about a 3.5% increase. Now granted, it was almost all in restoration of the gap elimination, which was about $120,000 altogether. But there were some minuses, ups and downs. BOSIs going down a little bit because we're using less services with them. Transportation went down a little bit. Whereas textbook aid went up, because actually we have more kids this year than we did last year. A little eyeball thing. It just, this year was very good to see more kids than last year. And then we also added about $170,000 in for excess cost aid. So that's not figured into those numbers anywhere. But as we look from last year's revenue budget to this year's revenue budget, it's about an 8% increase. Now, a lot of that is driven by additional special ed cost, which isn't anything to do with, you know, there's only a couple areas. They didn't really, they did tweak foundation aid a little bit. We got about an extra $7,000 out of that. But when it came to the gap elimination, it wasn't across the board. Everybody got, you know, a 40% reduction in it. Some almost got a complete reduction. Some of them almost wiped out. So it's really hard to compare one year to the next when numbers are always changing in the old year and in the new year. But overall, we should see about 8% more state aid next year than we did this year. But it's really based on two things. The elimination, partial elimination of the gap elimination of about $120,000 and projecting at least $170,000 in excess cost aid. But that's because I'm driving an extra $300,000.
I was about to say, that's formula-driven. That's something we get under the formulas.
Yes, that's correct.
Set for.
Correct.
Right. That's not a gift from the state.
No, 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 not at all. No, you got to spend the money to get some of that money back, but not all.
So if you want to characterize any of this as a gift from the state, I'm not sure that.
I don't consider any of it.
Yeah, the state may consider it such. The most that you're looking at is that reduction of the gap elimination.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
About 3.5%-ish.
Really, the only thing that drove more aid to us was a change in the foundation aid of $7,000. As far as I'm concerned, that gap elimination should have been ours to begin with. So that's, to me, that's not nothing new.
That's exactly, that's exactly the point that I'm getting at. You know, in the press, not necessarily, just in the regional press, on the state press, there've been percentages reported as high as 6% overall in state aid increases. And if that number's a credible number, which I don't know offhand whether it is or isn't, but if it is, then Rhinebeck made it much worse than the state average. Because why? We don't know. If you're talking about discretionary as opposed to formula-driven aid, for some reason, Rhinebeck was not gifted the way other districts in the state were. And that's quite distressing. You know, again, I want to give you gentlemen and the legislators and the staff and the students full credit for preventing harm to the program the district delivers to the students. But I have to say how disappointed and unhappy I am about how the state treated our district. And I want to say also how disappointed I am in our local legislators, who, when we met with them, said all the right things about how concerned they were about our district and all the districts that they serve getting adequate aid. But when push came to shove, did not really fight for it. And not only did they not deliver us adequate aid, but they also allowed for a new likely unfunded mandate that we're going, that you are going to have to be grappling with any time now, in repetition of the events that happened a couple of years ago. And that's a very, very disappointing outcome. I think that the residents of the district and the voters in the district should be aware of that and should take that into consideration the next time that these representatives run for office. Because the one thing that the state representatives are supposed to do that has big impact on localities is deliver education, appropriate education at a price that we can afford to pay. And I think that they failed us in that. Thank you.
Other questions, your colleagues?
Well, I agree with Lisa on many counts. And, you know, I think the process speaks to, again, like a not transparent process as much as the governor has spoken for years about Albany being more transparent. You know, if you're following the last 48 hours before the budget's passed, it's basically completely not transparent. And I think as our, we discussed in the finance committee meeting as well, when the budget numbers are given, they're numbers. There's not a sort of policy statement about what, how that, what's the thinking behind it and what are the reasons for these numbers versus those numbers? So the mixing of these very severe and I think absolutely, you know, wrong-headed policy initiatives like a new APPR by October connected to your budget are all going out there. And then we don't even get the, an acknowledgement of how the numbers were determined. I know Tom, one of Tom's thoughts was that our combined wealth ratio had something to do with it.
I doubt it.
Just a guess, but, you know, it's really appalling. That is really not a democratic process, both in terms of how the budget's determined and then the education policy initiatives that come out of that are really frightening. New way that our governor is proceeding. That being said, once again, under really difficult circumstances, you know, I think we've sort of managed to find a way in this budget to not implicate programs, but I just want to acknowledge that it's always regrettable to lose a position. And, you know, we are, should this budget be approved and passed in this way, we're losing a position at the middle school. That being said, and I'm sure you all talked about it at the workshop, that, you know, given our enrollment numbers, there's a logic to that. So sort of driven as well by kind of programmatic needs, but I want to acknowledge that. And then Tom, I do have a question though about the excess cost aid and just where that's here. Because, you know, I see from March 31st, we were, you know, $300,000 above the tax limit. We have deducted $180,000 from the budget. Is the rest that, is the rest that made up by the revenue of the top?
Well, yeah.
But then where's the, are you not calculating the excess cost aid in its entirety because in fact, it's not, I mean, it's money that's owed us, but we don't actually have those numbers about when that revenue is going to come in? Or I'm just wondering where that's reflected?
Well, yeah, and that's something, as I got to the end of this, I looked because we added $170,000 and I can't remember what meeting on the revenue side. It was between the workshop we did that Saturday and then that Tuesday night at the workshop, we discussed it and said, "Oh, let's put $170,000 into it." But we never followed it up with a change in this chart. So that was one thing I did realize. We did add $170,000 to the revenue side, which didn't change the budget at all. All it did was change the tax levy. It actually decreased the tax levy by $170,000. And that happened between the workshop on the 21st. So at the end of page three, three of five. So at the end of page three, three of five, and then moving from there, that's where that, that money got changed in there. So there isn't actually any particular, because if you see that, we almost lose $300,000 between, on page two, we're at almost $600,000 as the amount to reach to the levy. Then we have, and when we get to the next section, which gets into additions to the workshop, not at the workshop, this is after the workshop, that only came out to 132,000. Well, add the extra 170,000 in there, that's our drop of 300,000. That's how we got from 600 to 300.
I see. Okay.
Was a $130,000 reduction in expenses, but an increase of $170,000 on the revenue side.
So you figured it, but there's no notation?
There's no notation. You have to figure out how to put that in there to really complete the whole cycle. And that's something I realized tonight, I was going through this, that there was that piece that was missing of how that $170,000 got into this budget.
Okay, that, I, great. Thank you.
More?
I have a couple of questions. Has there been any movement? We talked to Cahill about the ELL situation, having to add another half to a full-time position to cover our ELL population of 18.
Well, two things have happened without a positive outcome, just to be quite honest with you. Yeah, I know, it's shocking. And one thing that happened was that, I think it was just a couple of days before we went on spring break. Richard Zip went to a workshop across the river, I think at the Ulster BOSI.
Yeah, it was a whole regional.
Specific to that, that new law, by way of figuring out whether, you know, we really had to hire the teacher and a half that he calculated the law requires us to, to hire. And he's just been full of good news lately. He came back from his meeting, and he said, "We have to hire that many." What we decided to do was to hire a full-time teacher to start, and, you know, some of this could depend on, on how those kids get scheduled. We're budgeted for, for one and a half. He said, "Let's hire one, see how it works out. If, in fact, we actually need the other half a person, we can hire that person, you know, after the year has, has started." He wants to make sure that we're not hiring people without, without work to do. Yeah.
To be quite honest with you.
On the Cahill side, I'm not sure if that came up in your discussions with them the week I was away, because you did have several conversations with his aide. I'm not sure if he brought that up or not.
Well, he did.
Did he mention?
They're still working on it. They're still working on it, but didn't, wasn't too positive, that he felt his own SED was sticking, putting their test down, and, no, there's not the same. It's not an unfunded mandate, it's an unfunded regulation. So it's, it's not, it's different. It's different. It's not the same thing. It's an unfunded regulation.
The only thing I've seen has been, from SED on this topic, is something about some flexibility or easing of the certification regulations, at least at the beginning. So, because we knew as soon as we saw that law, that there was going to be a shortage of English language arts, ELL teachers. So if you have to hire so many, because you have to meet the requirements of a law, and there aren't enough certified teachers to meet the need, then somebody's stuck. So the only thing that's come out of SED that I've seen has been, "Well, we'll give you some flexibility in the certification area of who you use until there can be more certified teachers in that area churned out." I'm not sure, that might help us a little bit, but we're still going to hire, have to hire 1.5 FTE teachers. So no good news really on that front.
And then just a couple of other quick questions. What is kindergarten enrollment right now?
With registration and CPSC kids coming in from preschools that had an arrangement, and then a couple of packets that went out that way. 53, 54 was about this, and we're at.
Okay, okay.
So we're up from like the high 30s to the low 50s now? I mean, just over the last three weeks or four weeks?
We noticed that we have two sets of CPSC kids, most of those are at the center. And then there are two or three packets that went out.
But are they included in your estimate of 53?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 53, we could probably save just a bit, 53, if everyone came to the center today.
Okay. And then the expansion of the STEM program, does that include adding new units to the launch program, or just having David be a full-time STEM teacher?
We definitely have room to do that. In fact, I just met with him yesterday afternoon, and I've been talking, so, yeah, without a doubt, the first two modules, all sixth grades, no worries, that's not a problem. And they did adopt, they just created two more modules, the fourth, fifth, eighth, and five. Obviously, that would be impossible to do with one person down the front of the school year, but we were just talking about game planning, a handful of like the third module for a bunch of the grades, possibly the upper grades as they feed into this building. So like, just an estimate, like three, four, or five, might be three modules throughout the year. We're playing with a few different things. One of them is, obviously, he learned a lot, I learned a lot about the scheduling and maybe it's been done this year. It's his first year doing it, so he was happy with the training, but, you know, shoring up where he can and things like that. We've also noticed we've found some feedback from a few grades, fourth grade specifically, but a couple of grades have mentioned the possibility of like more intense, like getting them in, getting through a module in a week, but like two classes, maybe they do like any upper grade maybe. And, and, which will allow you to get through a full module with a class in a week. And some of them felt that that would be a really good thing to do, to get some high interest in kids' enrollment. So, and the staff is really open to a lot of different possibilities. So anyway, it's hard to say, but, you know, the idea of training for a third module for a handful of the grades, maybe even three additional grades within the third, that's absolutely doable. We'd have to see. You know, with that intensive scheduling, they free up time for a little bit, if you're conservatively.
Sure.
Yeah, he'd really do. And plus, he also does the science test, which is a little piece of his work. So we just thought he'd definitely be able to get a lot more of those modules taken care of. We pretty much got all this year, except for two grades that we know of. Yeah. And got there.
Thanks.
Diane?
I just have one question for you, Brett. So if we, if we do need to add a kindergarten teacher, that happens, then right now, all the cuts on tier two are about to happen. Now, they're not all your cuts, but I'm just wondering, I mean, the other option would be not to make the STEM teacher full-time. So given those two choices, would, you know, what would your preference?
I, it's hard to say. For me, I mean, I, I, I love to see a full section regarding the numbers that are confusing. And for me, you know, that's, that number for the AAS could help with some of that, plus some of the other stuff that we've gotten, the other tiers. But we'd have to talk about that. And I do think to some extent, it would, it could possibly affect other offices, and we'd have to get together, and we'd have to do that for the coming year, and we'd have to see. You know, one other thing, more, just go back to the question, the other thing, not that she said, but, David and I discussed, was also that the, one of the things we're working on curricular-wise is the fact that, you know, since the state hasn't adopted the next-gen standard, yet the STEM courses are aligned with the next-gen standard, you can imagine, if we take a look at our curriculum maps, and where that looks, and whether they're aligned, there really isn't anything that aligns at all. Even where things are taught in what grade, the next-gen standards, and science, take everything, and move them around, and then the grades, in fact, I think, I can't remember that, motion, movement, or something along those lines, I'm not giving the right statement, but in second grades, but the only thing that aligns where those are modules can be in second grade, is STEM. So that's, that's also become a bit of, certainly a next step, we've got to use, but the state has had these modules, these, the next-gen science standards sitting out there and haven't really adopted them, and you've got to think, you know, curriculum-wise, you have to kind of figure out whether we're going to, well, we're obviously ultimately going to have to revamp that aspect, that content area in our existing curriculum units. So that's made the conversation tougher, too, because we'll be optimal, you know, optimally beloved, for every one of those modules to align sequentially with the units. That's going to be a huge nice step. So on another note, the full-time, that would be another completely deal, and how to dive into STEM, only if the summer begins to begin next year, so. That's one of my questions.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on the budget?
I just want to be sure that I understand this correctly, that were it to be the case that there's a sudden upsurge of kindergarten enrollments, the budget as it's currently configured would still allow for a moment of adjustment, you're describing, where we could revisit this question about, about the staffing of kindergarten, correct? I mean, the way you're describing it is that...
I mean, I think we'd have to make a decision based on the numbers and the timing, like, like we do all the time. I think where we're at, and again, you know, Brett may not, and I may not totally see eye to eye on this, but we've, you know, we've discussed it, and from where I sit, given a $180,000 gap, I can't justify keeping a placeholder for a teacher, especially given the numbers we have now. So I'm not recommending that. That said, we've given some thought to where we would go if those numbers, let's say, all of a sudden, we've got 90 kids in kindergarten, I mean, it would be a stretch, to be honest with you, but we're not just going to turn a blind eye. We're going to have a discussion about it. And like I said, I think we've got some backup plans that aren't going to harm program, that aren't going to force us to, to drop staff from one program in order to be able to hire that teacher. And there are always other unknowns that, that we don't know as we're sitting here now. We don't know that we're not going to get more than the excess cost aid that Tom put in. You know, we're being conservative, because we don't want to put ourselves up against the wall. But I think if that becomes a need, and the board determines that that is a need that has financial implications, then we have some places where we can go to meet that need if we need to.
I mean, the other area, which I told, was, you know, we're looking to hire, and I don't know how many, exactly how many people, but I'm thinking through the retirements and a couple of new positions, we're talking about hiring seven or eight new teachers for next year.
Right.
They're all slated to get family health coverage.
Right.
They're not all going to.
Right.
And so, you know, there's going to be savings there. Just don't know how much it is yet, but I would assume probably half of those probably aren't going to, are going to be, you know, going to be an individual policy instead of families. So I know there's savings there, but, you know, until it happens, I don't know. But I have a feeling, though, that some of those things will come to fruition as we go along.
And can I just ask one other fellow question? Since I'm not on the finance committee, enlighten me, so we really received no rationale or explanation for the amount allotted to us for the gap elimination? There's no, there's no sort of explanation of...
There's an explanation. It's just we haven't received it.
Oh, all right. So we just know the amount.
We're speculating that what drove that, what has driven that is...
Combined wealth ratio.
Is our combined wealth ratio. And that's the only, that's the only conclusion we can draw. And again, this is not to take away from schools who got the entire gap elimination adjustment returned to them, but the ones that did are school, are school districts with a lower combined wealth ratio, and the ones with high combined wealth ratios, like Reinbeck and others, got a partial restoration. So, you know, based on the number of years we've been doing this, especially that Tom has been counting the beans here, I think that's a reasonable conclusion to draw, but no one has come out and said, "This is how we allocated that," and they won't.
Lisa?
Thank you. But I appreciate that. I appreciate this speculating, speculating, and I also appreciate the basis on which you're speculating, which sounds perfectly plausible to me. But is it not the fact that the combined wealth ratio doesn't mean Reinbeck, as a district, has more money in its pocket to spend?
It means our community does.
Correct, but the district doesn't.
Not the district, not the district, but they feel as though the community has it.
And is it not also correct that the same tax levy limit formulas that apply to all the other districts in the state also apply to us?
See, that's my argument. That's my, I have my ability to raise monies just as much as any other school district now.
Or as little.
Or as little, right. So we should be all treated the same when it comes to state aid and restoration of things, because we're all in the same boat now.
Especially in an environment where the state is talking about having budget surpluses, significant budget surpluses. Justification for returning all the elimination and gap elimination adjustment money to some districts, but not others, is not meritorious. Is that fair?
I'd say that's pretty polite.
Not meritorious. I'm trying to be polite.
Yeah, you're doing a very nice job.
What I'm thinking about is next year, where, you know, how, because the lower wealth districts have very little gap elimination left, how are they going to drive money to them? And, you know, are they going to restart us first before they drive money to them? That's one of my big questions. Are they going to drive the money to us, or are they going to get rid of the gap elimination before they start fiddling with increasing foundation aid or something else?
Or those schools are going to get more foundation aid, and we get little if any, but maybe some of that gap elimination aid. You know, it's, it's a lot of smoke and mirrors.
Yeah, next year, it's not gap elimination. We're not going to do that. We're going to work on the foundation formulas now, which is going to drive more money to the low wealth ratios, and we're going to be sitting out there.
And I'm not suggesting that those kids don't deserve or shouldn't get the aid that they need. I just, I still don't understand why Reinbeck should be getting less than it needs. And to say that we're going to add money to some districts and not others sounds just like, you know, paying Peter, starting Peter to pay.
It's like the smart monies, too, from the bond. Once again, very minute compared to everybody else. It's all driven by combined wealth ratio. But we can't put that money in the budget to increase people's, and I don't want to do that. I don't want to. We shouldn't have to. People are taking a lot of good money for New York State income tax, going up to Albany. And I just feel as though we're not getting our fair share back. And that hurts our program overall, that we can't move forward the way we want to because of this. But...
Rick?
So not a question, but a thank you for the sensitive and thoughtful way that you gentlemen, all of you gentlemen and others have handled this process. It's, you know, easy for me to come in every so often and grandstand a little bit, and hope that'll have a little impact, but I always know that there's hard work going on every day here, and so thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any other discussion on the budget? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for staying.
Oh.
One more question.
It's just that because Joe said that he wanted to have a sense of whether we're all in agreement, should we at least say whether we are or we aren't before we leave the topic?
So I'll ask the question as to whether you want the budget dollar figure, which, again, it's just, it's just, it's a big figure, but it's, it's a figure, okay? It's not pages and pages of line items. That's not what you're approving, that's not what the public is voting on. So my question is whether or not you want us to proceed with a budget figure for you to approve on April 21st that reflects this discussion and this proposal. It's really like a yes or no question, as far as I'm concerned.
So that's the 31,678,650.
You got it.
665.
Yep.
I see heads nodding.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. I get, while the getting's good.
We can keep here all night.
With that, we'll move on to the 2015-16 BOSI's administrative budget and board member vote.
Okay. Hopefully, this will be a less complicated discussion. When we meet next week... When we meet next week, we are meeting to elect three people to three positions on the BOSI's Board. They're in your, your packets. And the BOSI's Administrative Budget that we discussed several weeks, several board meetings ago is in the amount of $4,317,593. That's not just for us, that's for all the component districts to, to divvy up as the formulas dictate. Since there are only three people running for three slots, your options are vote for one or two or three of them. And that's solely up to your discretion. I will place an action item to approve each of those three as a separate item. And again, you can move second and vote a or nay on all three. And there'd be a fourth item to approve that dollar figure. And that's it. We move on to, at that point, to approve our own budget. And then unless there's some, something that is not on my radar right now, we're calling a question and going home. This is next week. Yeah, don't get excited about them. Yeah, and it's, the next week should be a, should be a pretty quick meeting. It is a special meeting, because then we're back here the following Tuesday for a regular meeting.
All right. Any questions on that? Okay. Move on to Board Committee Reports. We'll start with Audit.
Yes, so like it does minutes, Paul Slaton has joined our committee as a volunteer community member. So many thanks to Paul for volunteering his time. And of course, Paul has a lot of experience on both the Board and the Audit Committee, so that's been helpful. And then the other parts of the agenda, as you can see from the minutes, we had a representative from our, the accounting firm, Vaticor, to discuss doing some testing of our payroll processes and not a formal audit. You recall that we do not, are not required to do an internal audit because of the size of the district, but we had already previously engaged Vaticor before the state told us that. So we thought we'd make use of their services to help identify any concerns or, you know, help develop better practices as regard to certain areas in the business office. And we're gonna start with payroll. That was a productive meeting with Donna, and actually we did meet today and we'll have other minutes, but, you know, we're moving forward with this arrangement letter to have her do this kind of testing. And then we met with our claims auditor, Steve Bangard. Also a productive conversation. You can see in the minutes, Steve explained some of what he does and when he comes into the district and, and does it every three weeks or so, he comes in and reviews the warrants and make sure they reconcile with purchase orders and the invoices and the bills. He commended the district on our practices and doing a very good job and says it's a pleasure to work with the business office and that any issues that crop up are quickly resolved. So it was good to hear that from Steve. He also shared with us some reflections on some of our practices. He previously was an assistant business official at a school district. He also was a loan officer at a bank. So he had some interesting comments, and I just want to highlight that having looked at our external audit in the fall, he said that he commended Tom Burnell in particular on doing a masterful job of the district's budget. I think we might wanna just look at that second note again about the cafeteria program, although I don't know that we have any money to do this, but it's something that's cropped up around this table before, around funding it from the general fund. And just a few other comments, but it was, this is my first year in the Audit Committee. It was very useful to meet with Steve and see the man who signs all the warrants on the backs and have him talk about the work he does. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Lisa?
Just two comments. Thrilled that Paul Slaton is, is with you guys. He's a huge valuable resource, so very happy for us and for you. And I'm also very happy that you got a chance to, to meet and talk to Steve Bangard. My two years on the Audit Committee, I was very impressed with him. And I think he's also a really good resource.
All right. Other questions for Audit?
Just a comment. I was at a meeting on Saturday with, where David Shaw was at, and he identified for, for small districts who are no longer required to, to have that kind of a internal audit, he identified continuing to do so as, as a best practice, assuming that the district can afford the expenditure, that that, that's in his opinion, a good use of funds to bring in that, that internal auditor and do focused audits on areas that may, maybe difficult areas or just areas that we want to improve. So I'm glad we're, you were able to use the monies that we earmarked for that purpose, for that purpose.
I just want to second your point about the cafeteria question, which is ongoing. You know, what really is the most pragmatic way financially to plan for making up the gap, which we always seem to be confronted with? I do feel like in my time on the Board, this has been a perennial concern. It's interesting to hear someone from his perspective point out how very difficult it is actually to, you know, make a, make a self-sustaining business. So I, I know tonight's not the time to talk about it, but I hope we'll remember this when we turn to talk about it again.
Well, I think the one thing that's gonna be a little bit helpful is that, that gap is, we're getting closer to the block.
Yeah.
I don't know if we'll ever get to the block, but it's a more palatable to see a $20,000 or $30,000 line instead of a $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 line. So at least it, I think as we go forward to another year, it may be something we can work into the budget. Because it really does have the same effect, whether or not you, every two or three years, you take it out of the fund balance. It, it, it doesn't matter, it's being taken care of.
Right.
If we do put it in the budget, it's something that happens on a yearly basis, it's built right into your budget process and we're not to worry about it every two, three years and transfer money. Also, you don't get a gig in your audit report saying you're in the red.
Yeah.
It's another thing that does help.
Anything else for Audit Committee? All right. Move on to Curriculum Committee?
Those are mine. So we spent a fair amount of time, we invited Steve Johnson to come join us to talk about the Technology Plan C, as we're sort of referring to it as. And specifically about the middle school technology courses. So we've sort of acknowledged that there is a great disparity of technological skills in the kids coming up from Chancellor, and we really need to address that problem so that teachers can teach in their classrooms and don't have to teach kids how to use technology, but can utilize the technology to deliver instruction. So the idea is that this tech lab will provide coursework in not only digital safety and citizenry and some keyboarding, but the Microsoft IT Academy, which Steve referenced at our budget workshop, is actually a self-paced online kind of course. So kids who know how to do PowerPoints in third grade aren't gonna be held back by kids who don't know how to cut and paste in sixth grade. There will be benchmarks put in place for achievement throughout the year based on grade level, but highly motivated kids can go beyond those benchmarks. And those that are not as savvy will work to make the benchmarks. The lab configuration also is set up as sort of an isolated learner environment, so we need to reconstruct the lab as well. But Marvin, we, we had a long conversation about the fact that the programs that go into this lab actually have to support the education of the core courses. If they're being taught a number of things in the tech lab or the computer lab that isn't used in the, in the core classrooms for reports and research and all those kinds of things, then it's just doing something for the sake of doing something rather than promoting the actual education of their, these kids and their skills. So because our current budget doesn't have any money in that for this, as Joe mentioned, we're hoping that RSF will fund this reconstruction. And Marvin knows that it's an aggressive timeline, but feels like it's doable for September. So workable. Deirdre's been sharing articles with us about e-reading versus long-form texts and the efficacy of that or not. And she shared lots of anecdotal information about her experience in her own classrooms at, in, on the college level. And we, so we've sort of vaded that around for a while and wanna assure everybody that these books will remain in the library. New ones may. We, we still love paper here. But we'll use technology where it supports in the future, not in, in place of good old fashioned ink on paper. And then the latter part of our conversation really centered on Steve and Marvin's visit to the Scarsdale Center for Innovation. They were really excited about what they learned there, the people they spoke to. This innovation center sort of was born out of the Scarsdale superintendent's dictate to his curriculum and technology directors to change the narrative around public education, stop bemoaning what we can't do and, and figure out how to innovate and take risks. And the Board of Education at Scarsdale fully supported not only their superintendent, but the teachers in sort of busting out of the, what was a safe kind of mold in the school culture and really figure out what works better and why. So the purpose of the center is, and you can see it in your notes, to reimagine teaching and learning, to foster widespread change and to learn how other organizations foster innovation. So these teachers have been given the space to collaborate with each other and learn best practices from not only college professors, but other, other public school districts. There's, there are some links in the notes about the funding that they've done for certain projects. Sounds pretty exciting, but what Marvin most wanted to convey was his interest in how they were able to seed innovation in the entire district. And really wants to take a good, hard look at our own in-house expertise and, you know, like the library here and what we can do to foster more programs or expansions of programs like the Extended Response Grant at Chancellor and just provide the opportunity for teachers to look beyond what they do day to day. And then, you know, we had to ask the question, did the budget cover everything Marvin needed? And then he did say that, yes, he was feeling pretty confident about that. Most of the monies for professional development this summer will be for the high school English department and the middle school, high school, social studies department. And as Brett alluded to, Next Gen is on the way, but not for next year at least. Hopefully we'll get an update on the grant to RSF next time and the Chancellor curriculum update.
Diane?
With the middle school computer lab, so this is a change in thinking from the other plans and, you know, makes sense, this route. I'm wondering what the long-term goal is for that, because it was just to get all the kids kind of caught up. You know, is that a three to five-year plan? Is that an eight-year plan? Like what happens to the lab then? Is it, you know, spend all this money to build the lab and three years we don't need it anymore? Like what is the long-term?
Well, we talked about that a little bit. The, it's not really a rebuild of the lab as much as reconfiguring the lab in sort of a modular way so that the, the room can change up depending on what kind of class is in there. So the physical space can evolve as necessary. We, because it is a complete shift and, you know, total infusion to an actual lab setting, I think we all sort of came to the idea that, you know, though it's a departure from the plan, the original plan, it's meeting a need for the kids. So we sort of need to take that into account and, you know, with the infusion at Chancellor, those kids are gonna start coming up with more skills. So, you know, we're, we're gonna have to sort of keep it on the radar and figure out how these things will evolve.
Yeah, Steve and I had, you know, followed up on that, on that conversation. We've, we've met a couple of times. And I think our thinking collectively is that if, and I, actually Mark and I talked about this a little bit when we met last week, that if we can get, if we can get five or six years out of that lab, which kind of makes sense, given the, the student population from Chancellor coming through full circle into the middle school, that, you know, after, after five or six years, we'd, we'd sit back and reassess whether using it the way we'd be using it for the next five or six years is something we need to continue to do, or is that a point in the evolution of, of technology here that we'd either be using the, the lab for a different purpose or using those machines in a different plan? I mean, you know, we don't, we don't know what things are gonna look like six years from now. We also know that the life cycle for technology is somewhere in that neighborhood. So even if we were gonna continue to use it the same way we'd use it for the next five or six years, we'd probably be looking at updating the, the hardware in another six years anyway. And maybe at that point, the purpose has changed, given the, given the expertise of the kids who are coming through. So, I mean, we're not looking at this as, well, this'll, this'll take care of us for a year or two and then we'll be doing something else. We're, we're looking at this on a five or six year, as part of a five or six year cycle.
So have to continually like kind of track that.
Yeah, yes.
And fix things if it's.
Of course we will. And make adjustments, just like we've already made adjustments and we're pretty early on in the plan. But, you know, to keep going down a road just because that's what the plan says you're gonna do is not, you know, not very, very helpful in any way, so.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One is, you know, just to note, I'm glad the conversation's about not falling into the trap of using like current or cool technology programs. I think that's really a challenge when there's so much of that out there and so much advertising and money to be made. How do you sort through that? So I appreciate that the Curriculum Committee is having that conversation with our administrators, including the discussion around long-form text versus e-reading, because we really always have to be careful not to just think that technology is the best way and the only way and this program and that program is the right way to learn. So I'm, I'm just pleased that the Curriculum Committee is having that conversation. Always needs to be there. I think like just in the larger zeitgeist, now that there's, you know, it's all been with us so much now, technology, now there is more out there about like, okay, so where are the limitations to teaching and learning and what are the best ways to learn using technology or what type of technology? I also want to just comment on the, the Scarsdale visit, and I've been interested in their, I guess this is calling it a teacher collaborative, I think they've called it other things like a teaching academy. And I guess just to, you know, I would just wanna put out there for something us to think about as we go forward. I mean, it's, it's something, you know, that we've touched upon occasionally in the Curriculum Committee over years, and I'm glad they did a visit. It is really this collaboration. I think there even Hartsdale Public Schools are part of it, at least a portion of it, some colleges. You know, we have those kinds of possibilities in our area to collaborate with other schools and to collaborate with local colleges. And, you know, maybe if we percolate ideas for some kind of way to, the state, I think the state is really doing all it can to de-professionalize teaching and to also make public, public schools look so inadequate. And, you know, we may have to just start taking matters more into our own hands about being innovative. So maybe as we think of some of our goals in the future, you know, building these sort of professional learning communities more in the Hudson Valley, maybe we should be looking to those kind of collaborations to strengthen our own school system by also helping to strengthen everyone else's school system as well. This is a really fantastic model. So, you know, if the Curriculum Committee is gonna talk about it more, I really would support giving, you know, some time every once in a while to think like, how could we do something like? a while to think like, how could we do something like, like this?
Okay. Anything else on curriculum? Bring this to finance.
Basically that, that was mine and we discussed it all. I don't, I looked and there really is, I don't think there's anything here that, I'll just, I will note a point that Diane made. I know that Marvin has said he does have, you know, his summer curriculum work is appropriately funded and I know he's being very good about, you know, helping us in our budget, but that any kind of cut, cuts that happen to any part of the budget, you know, kind of leave the budget. So if they don't, it's not always easy to get back, so.
True.
Just, I thought that was an important point to, to mention.
Right.
Every year when you cut back some things. For example, if we do the tier-two cuts we have at some point, those things don't just come back easily. You've got to really, you know, you don't, you don't have them for a while. Other than that, that's it.
Okay. Facilities Committee?
That's me. So over the past several meetings, we've been talking about the lead-up to the Building Condition Survey and it's going to be completed this summer. And really that's the first step before thinking about putting together a plan to go to voters for referendum. Oh, before I say that, I should just say we had a brief discussion of a Facebook petition that was being circulated by a student. I want to commend the student for civic activism and say that we're aware of the conversation and it's happening with all the people who, you know, are informed and hopefully will inform the student about the possibilities and the costs of examining the use of styrofoam in the cafeteria. But then we moved on to talk about the, thinking about planning for a hypothetical timeline towards such a vote. Tom has been speaking with Mr. Bastian of Bernard Donigan and Associates about what that timeline might look like and Tom presented that to us. We went through the hypothetical timeline with all of the many, many stages from securing an architect through determining costs, working with SED and so forth. He spoke to us about how the estimate has to be very carefully drawn up because of many examples that he shared with us of school districts where there was a gap in terms of that estimate that led to problems down the road. He also helped us to see how certain kinds of projects, such as technology projects, really don't fall under this kind of funding concept and SED gets very involved particularly in the kinds of changes that would come that involve health and safety regulations. The states were involved in that. The smart bond details, which are not yet really known, of course, will help us to understand what will happen with technology changes more broadly across the state. And certainly as any capital project plan is being discussed, the Curriculum Committee should get involved just to talk about how space and use of space would be impacted in relation to the curriculum. We then talked for some time about the importance of involving members of the community at the appropriate stage to get input and think about planning to move forward for a referendum and really the sense that Tom and Joe shared with us is that late fall would probably be the earliest we could think about such a vote in 2016. So we're really working our way through the steps of the process, the first of which is for the Building Condition Survey to take place this summer.
Diane?
So do we already know some of the things we would want for this referendum? Is this like the windows and the asbestos or is this, we're waiting to see if there isn't? It sounds like there, you already have like an idea of maybe that there will be a need for...
Well, there, there have been some things on the, the last Building Condition Survey, like roofs. We know that in not too many years down the road, some of our roofs are going to need to be replaced. So instead of waiting until they start leaking and then having to do it as an emergency project, that would be a, that would be a good thing. I mean, it's expensive to re-roof a good portion of your buildings and I'm not sure exactly how big a portion needs to be. Sheldon would, would have that information, but that's something that, that could go in, in a capital project. We're not looking at a, likely not looking at a $25 million project like we, you know, we had last...
So it's just like repairs?
What's that?
These are mostly repairs that were done for that time?
At this point, that's what we're looking at. We would want to, we would want to take the opportunity as part of this process to talk with the Curriculum Committee and our building principals to see if there are programmatic needs. I mean, none seem to be screaming out at us at this point, but that BCS process could uncover some areas where we need some work. So we're, we're really not going into it with any foregone conclusions about what might be needed, but we're thinking that a small project, and a small project is typically in the several millions of dollars, not 15 or 20 or 30 or 40, is probably something that would build on the work that we did in, in the most recent project here and not let things run down, so.
I think one of the big things too that Sheldon's concerned about is asbestos flooring, that, you know, if we do have an area become crumbly and we got to immediately address it, that's $10,000 to do a 10-square foot, whereas if we did it as part of a project, we could get, you know, a whole classroom done for 20, $30,000, I think is his estimate, you know? Why do a little chunk for 10,000 when you can get a whole room, you know? So that's one area. You know, I, I want to go to the principals and that, you know, there's something we need to do about our cafeterias, you know, from my perspective. But then also curricularly, I mean, I don't know if there's anything bubbling up through. I mean, I know I gave the extent, example of an astronomy. And I'm not looking at that.
Look to the stars.
The final frontier.
Don't write that.
Don't put that in there.
Don't write that.
You're not planning that at all.
No, it's...
He's got a fever. But he'll be all right tomorrow.
But is something like solar panels like that?
That could be so, I mean, yeah.
A lot of things.
The track.
The track being resurfaced.
Yeah, track's going to need to be resurfaced in a few years. I didn't know.
Windows.
Windows.
Well, we know how much that body saved us, that was...
Once you open this door, like, it's like your own house.
But I think we'll have architects help us, then this Building Condition Survey will be a big help. And we have to do that anyway by, by SED mandate, so we'll, we're figuring, we can piggyback on some of the things that, that are brought up through the Building Condition Survey and timing-wise, if we do the BCS this summer and then we start doing some planning this coming year for a possible referendum, the year after, you know, we'll be in a reasonable cycle.
Would that survey also, would it just talk about things that need to be fixed or would it possibly tell us ways that we can be more energy efficient or, you know?
Now, the Building...
I don't know if it does that.
Now, the Building Condition Survey, what it does is it looks at your, all the different systems within your building and really puts a, a, a condition on it, an expected life cycle on it, and then a possible replacement cost. It won't get into energy efficiency.
Is there a way to do that? Because it would make sense if you're going to go ahead with that, if you could have some improvements that, you know, would make us more efficient.
I'm, I'm willing to bet that if, depending on how the, the RFP is written, that if you want to pay them to do an energy efficiency study along with the Building Condition Survey while they're already traipsing through your buildings, I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. But that's not part of, when they give you an RFP for BCS, it doesn't include all these bells and whistles, but...
There may be someone who'd do that for free.
There may be.
They have a chance that, you know...
Well, there, there is a way of doing that and that's called an energy performance contract, an EPC.
We've done a number of them.
We've done a number of them and the last time someone was through here, they basically said, I don't think there's anything we could possibly do within these four walls here that could possibly have a payback of 17 years, which is what SED and up there says is that we'll fund this for you if you can calculate a savings in a like amount. It just, just doesn't work that way, like replacing windows. Only ways, and you got to replace windows is we could have put in a boiler in. Well, that was, that was, because it was tied to a boiler, we could do that savings, just windows by themselves.
And then we used the Excel money for that other set of windows.
Yeah, we did, used the Excel money for that. And a lot of the other things that we've done over the past couple of years have actually really been done by Central Hudson, coming in and doing some efficiencies through them.
The LED lights and that.
Yeah, with the LED lights and that. So there's really not too much more we can do.
We've made very good...
Windows themselves, you know, cost about $50,000 for a classroom. There's no way in the world you're going to get $50,000 worth of savings from heat. Just isn't going to happen.
Not in the 17-year payback.
No, not in the 17-year payback. I think we see a lot of other benefits from it as far as better comfort, you know, you know, it's, you know, kids go from a nice cozy classroom, then they go across the hallway and, whoa, jeez, you know, depending on the time of the year, you know?
Deidre?
Yeah, so two things. One is, does, NYSERTA does home inspections for free. Would they, do they do schools?
I don't know. We'll find out.
Because I think it's worth, you know, looking into or having Sheldon look into or, and Sheldon certainly knows where we might have energy savings or not, but I know one of the things NYSERTA definitely identifies in older home, homes are windows as a problem. So just looking into how they can be helpful.
Excuse me, just on that point.
Yeah.
We could have somebody, whether it's NYSERTA or somebody else, come in and say, you know, you could save money and, and increase the comfort with new windows there. That may not be eligible for an energy performance contract because of the payback period, but it might be a great thing to put into a, a, a building proposition so you're not getting the payback, you're not doing it through an energy efficiencies project, but you're just doing it through a, a flat-out bond referendum. So there's more than one way to do those kinds of things.
And then I just want to say that I think discontinuing use of Starwood products is a good idea. I know that there are financial considerations, but I don't know if any, you were probably on the board, when several years ago, some middle school students did a project, some kind of presentation that they then made to an environmental organization where they talked about various ways that we could improve, you know, reduce our environmental footprint in our schools. And one of the things they talked about was the products that we use in the cafeteria, including like biodegradable trays or was one thing I know they focused on. At the time, I don't remember that they talked about styrofoam, but they might have and I don't know that we had styrofoam at the time, but those, that was a concern brought to us by students several years ago. So I appreciate that there are some conversations going on about that, but, you know, without the numbers in front of me to know what the financial considerations are, I think it's, I think it's a really good idea.
Well, I think two things are different now. Number one, I think those, those biodegradable products that did exist back, however long ago that was, and it wasn't terribly long ago, but...
Five minutes.
Yeah, about five or so years ago, those products were a lot more expensive than they are now. I mean, that, that's come down, although there's still a financial impact, we'd have to look at that. And we have a new cafeteria, a food service manager who has shown to be very interested in working with these kids and in looking at, at options for that. So he and a downpour kind of dived right into that. So at least I think we'll get, we'll get the cost, then we'll have to decide, do we want to go forward with, with a, a product that's going to add five cents on to every meal or 40 cents on to every... I mean, I, I don't know what the costs are either, but Larry's doing the research, so I have, I have a pretty high level of confidence that he'll lay it all out and say, this is what it would, this is what it would cost, this is the impact, now we make a decision. Is that how, is that where we want to spend money or do we not?
Right.
So he's taken off on that.
That's great.
Laura, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, so you guys are assuming that the BCS will be done this summer?
Yes, the plan.
It will be performed.
But you haven't, you haven't found a firm yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
They'll do it this summer.
They'll do it this summer. The idea is to present to the Facilities Committee in September. They have to file the report in January, so.
We're still ahead of the game.
We're still ahead, but we want to, we're jumping on that right now.
So based on what that says and what you guys determine would be appropriate for a bond, is it, am I correct in remembering that you had a firm help with, you know, for lack of a better word, the marketing of the bond referendum for the auditorium and all that, which was a much bigger project, but...
Well...
Help me.
Yeah, yeah, I will. I'll throw you a line. So the Building Condition Survey will really just be the starting point for discussions about a possible referendum. We may decide, depending on how happy we are with their work, to use the same firm that does the BCS for us to do more, you know, to do pre-referendum work and then referendum work and implementation work, and that remains to be seen. I think the BCS is a, is a great way to kind of test drive that architect and see how they work with us and how we like the quality of their work before we commit to a, a bigger capital project. But I, there would be a whole, and we had this discussion at the meeting, and there'll be a whole process after the Building Conditions Survey is over that will involve, you know, some level of community input in, in deciding what we might want to bring to the community to approve. After that, then you start to have conversations about, the last time when we did the big project, we hired a construction management firm, they provided pre-referendum communication services to us. Again, that was a significantly more extensive and expansive project than we're kind of thinking we might be doing, but that's, there's no reason not to consider those kinds of services. But I think we're, we're at least two or three or four clicks away from, from there. But we're trying to lay this out over the next year and a half, two years, so we, we're kind of working back from a possible, a possible referendum date to, and then, you know, we have State Education Department approvals. We went through that whole McGill at the, at the meeting. I mean, there's a lot there, but we want to start having the discussion now so we can position ourselves, so, so the timing works. So that's, I'm, we're real, real early in the discussion phase of this.
Any other questions for Facilities? Okay, that leaves policy.
Okay. We had two carryover items at the most recent meeting. The homework policy is still fermenting. Joe is stirring it occasionally with his administrators. And I, I think we'll, we'll get some updated information at the next meeting. Similarly, the potential policy regarding religious exemptions from the vaccination requirements is something that Joe needs to follow up with District's Legal Counsel on, and we similarly expect to hear more about that next meeting. We continued our review of the policies. As with, as has been previously the case, most of the policies didn't require any action on our part. Policy number 5100, the comprehensive student attendance policy, which is a big, big policy. We had some conversations about attendance and practices within different schools. We've asked Joe to make a couple of, I think it would fair to say minor wording changes to that policy. The school census policy is on, in our policy manual, but nobody does it and nobody knows what we're supposed to be doing with it. It may go back into a miss of recorded time. So that's another question that Joe's going to ask our legal counsel and get some advice on. And then we are, at the next meeting, we'll continue the discussion of that and the two carryovers.
Okay. Questions for Policy? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Deirdre?
Not ladies first.
I just wanted to say what good news it was to receive the links, which I think we all received, to the poetry projects that 12th grade students have been involved in. And to my mind, it's the perfect union between gaining the kind of skills to make a really compelling short film with editing techniques and technological know-how in the service of... And to my mind, it's the perfect union between gaining the kind of skills to make a really compelling short film with editing techniques and technological know-how in the service of personal exploration, autobiographical sort of commentary on a work of poetry. And what an extraordinary range of verse the students selected from, from kind of classics to very contemporary, even poetry written by classmates. And the, really the courage, the imagination, the creativity of our students. I felt very proud of the seniors who are graduating from Rhinebeck High School, seeing the range of their work and really how quite beautiful the films were that they made. So we all have links to it that were shared with us by the teacher so that we can all look and marvel. So that's extremely good news. We talk about college and career readiness. To my mind, to see students really bringing that level of thoughtfulness to their work and creativity to their work is a beautiful thing to see, so I hope you all enjoy it.
To dovetail on that, I actually went to the presentation today
Excellent.
Right before our audit meeting, and it really was fantastic. You know, only a handful of the kids were able to make their presentation, but really diverse, really thoughtful, and I thought really courageous for a 17 or 18-year-old to stand up there and sort of bare their soul about, you know, their feelings on life and what, you know, their opinion of poetry has become based on this class. And, you know, for one student, it hasn't changed at all, but for others, they had gained a much greater appreciation.
I think there are gonna be presentations tomorrow at
Yes.
9 o'clock and 12:50.
Yeah.
So if you're in the neighborhood.
Highly recommend it. It's really great.
All right, other good news?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I put this in your packets, thanks to the efforts of our intrepid assistant superintendent for everything that the superintendent doesn't have to do. We were awarded at, just this morning, by our insurance company, Utica National, with their school safety excellence award. I give Tom a lot of the credit because he actually gets to file the paperwork that you need to file to be considered for this award. And I think we've gotten it five or six times now in the last several, I thought that's what that
Yeah, that's what I said.
So anyway, another plaque for the district office is always nice, but the important part is, you know, thanks to the efforts of people like Tom and Sheldon Teeter and others, our school's a safer place for kids than it was last year or the year before. So I just want to acknowledge their efforts tonight in public.
And next year, we're going for titanium.
Yeah.
Was it gold this year?
No, gold, platinum.
Platinum, oh, okay.
Next one's titanium.
They start up, we start with an upscale metal, no bronze. No bronze for this company.
No bronze, silver, gold, no.
Congratulations. And Joe, I highly recommend that you get Tom a plaque that says assistant superintendent for everything.
Yeah, well, my Christmas present's out of the bag now, sorry.
All right, other good news? All right, seeing none, move on to old business. Any old business? Okay, we have another opportunity for public comment.
Sure.
Yes, please.
Say your name, it's your
This is Jake, he's a community member and parent of a fifth grader, and I just want to kind of thank Tom and Joe and all the work that you've put into this budget process over here. It's gotta be so painful, and we just get to see kind of some parts of it, and you guys work so hard on it. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the deadline at Chancellor of my daughter's in fifth grade, and it is so exciting to see somebody come home with such enthusiasm, which was out of that class. So I just would like to see if there is a way to build on that momentum and get that increase to where we just, you know, corrected as, decided as a community where it should go. The community support, the teachers, the admin, the board, everybody seems to be on par with the success of that. I would love to see that momentum built. From an RSF hat, if I could say, Marmy did give us an outline of the VMS project for the peer lab, and it is something that can be kind of agreed on in principle to support, so come to the gala and make that kind of stuff.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, there is no other public? To move on to other.
So, yeah, I just want to throw out there an idea that we should just be thinking about, given our conversation about the state budget, maybe if there are other ways that we can do additional advocacy around state budget and education policy issues than we do, either different timelines with our legislators, different mechanisms to communicate with them, perhaps advocating more within the New York State School Board Association, which I think is quite frankly kind of tepid in how they approach interacting with the governor's office. And, you know, as we think next year for bowls, maybe we need to be more assertive about our advocacy or communicating. I know in the past also the Dutchess County School Boards Association has often struggled to sort of find its footing, maybe with a new director there, there might be ways to use that organization. But, you know, I'm kind of, you know, it's really frustrating, especially when we hear say tonight and over and over again, how many great things are happening in our schools and under what different difficult circumstances we're operating. And that really is, you know, some people would say this is kind of a deliberate effort to sort of undermine public schools, and I do have that concern. So I just would want to ask all of you here, I mean, we're a smart group of people, how else we might advocate? I mean, this new APR that has, you know, if that comes to fruition, that we're gonna have to renegotiate the APR by October in order to get state aid, and the state education department, which by the way does not have, which has an acting commissioner, not a real commissioner, has to even develop that? I mean, this is preposterous. So I just think that we should, might want to think about other venues to advocate for our students with the state.
I couldn't agree more. It's actually a kind of, you know, Joe communicated with families in our district around, you know, the churn and the unhappiness with state testing. Certainly, this is something we're reading about in the newspaper every day. And one of the most important things it seems we can do and model for our students is, what does advocacy look like? What does, you know, sort of questioning policies you don't agree with and you think are wrong-headed, is the word used earlier? You know, what does that look like? What are the means available to us to communicate effectively? And we have a set of practices that we've, I believe, kind of really been true to over the years, but I certainly would be open to joining with others to explore additional options that would be a way of expressing the views we express around the table that we express to our, you know, local community through YouTube, but really, how can we effectively communicate to Albany?
I agree completely that more advocacy is ultimately better for us, for this district and for schools in general, but I guess I'm a little more pessimistic than you guys are about how likely, you know, just advocating for things is likely to help us in the long run. We have, I think, a governor who's very uninterested in and unsympathetic towards public education, and we have a legislature that, for whatever reasons, has shown not much inclination to push back against that. And, you know, I don't think that the results, the budget discussions were due in any way, shape, or form to a lack of advocacy on Rhinebeck's part. I think we did everything that was possible for us to do in this particular budget cycle to get the message out about what we needed. I think that message was ignored. And so while I'm all for trying to develop more imaginative ways of getting the message out, I also think that the most effective way ultimately to get your elected officials to do what you want them to do is to threaten them with losing their jobs and, you know, maybe even cause them to lose their jobs. After long enough in office, office holders tend to think that they're in office because they deserve to be there, not because they're serving their, the people they are supposedly representing. So if we want to advocate, maybe the thing to think about is how we advocate to our community to put some real pressure on their representatives for their own benefit.
I'm not sure who's handling it first.
I think it's hard to do that the way we do it in the context of the meetings we have now. I think maybe having an advocacy committee, for lack of another committee, but is a way to do it, somebody that you can kind of full-time, you know, devote attention to it and coming up with new ways or writing more letters or, you know, doing the research necessary. You know, I think we kind of react to things sometimes and we write letters, but that's not really, you know, doing what you're saying, like to really spend more time on it. So I don't know if that's maybe a way to go to
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm not as, I mean, I am deeply cynical, but I think my role here is not to be cynical. And I think our role as leaders is not to be cynical. And as I agree with Deirdre, that setting an example to our students about using means necessary to communicate with you think because also of sort of the integrity of that, like just for me personally, my personal integrity, when I see things that I object to, I feel like I need to speak about that. And communicating to our school district and our community about our perspective, we did once, I'm not sure that we ever did that letter that was going to go to state ed, ever made it up to state ed earlier about the relationship to chancellor and some penalties regarding some numbers there. But I think that that does have some integrity, and I think that, I think we do have to set that example about communicating, because there are multiple ways. I mean, we actually, you know, we have a regent who represents us, and it's no longer Harry Phillips, and I don't know that any of us know who that regent is and how we communicate with our regent. But they show up occasionally, the regents at various activities, and I just think we should be alert to expanding our role. Not that we did anything wrong that makes this happen, I think what happens is it all feels like we are really powerless because there's so much complexity in Albany to what the process is, and the politics are thick, thick, thick. It isn't just some democratic process, so. But that being said, I do think it's kind of our responsibility as leaders to push back against things, against, against this, a lot of things that we think are really problematic in running our district.
Okay, and I'll just add, you know, I kind of agree with just about everything that's been said around the table here, but, you know, for the benefit of those who are watching on YouTube or Panda, I think it's really important that people get involved, you know, they join committees, they write their legislators, you know, I mean, we, it's very easy to, you know, comment amongst your friends on social media about different topics, but the way to get something accomplished is really to get involved and, you know, write letters, form committees, do things like that to, you know, to get the word out about, you know, what's going on. So I'd like to encourage everybody to do that. Deirdre?
Well, I'd just like to volunteer to be on any advocacy group that may form here tonight.
The Wonder Woman, right, is another.
Could just be me, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other other?
I have another other. I just wanted to let the board know, I mentioned earlier being in a meeting on Saturday with David Shaw, I just wanted to let you know that I was asked to participate in the prospective school board members' training that Dutchess County School Boards Association held this, and it was this past Saturday. David was there to speak to the issues of school law. I was asked to speak to the issues of, don't anybody laugh, school board superintendent relations, and a few of the school board, county school board members spoke to some other related issues, went about three hours. Three of the people there, I think there were like nine or 10, three of the people there were interested in seats on the Wapingers board. So you can imagine that it was a lively conversation from, pretty much from start to finish, very interesting, but I appreciate the opportunity to be there and to sing the praises of this school board and this superintendent in terms of the work that we've done over the years. So just want to let you know, in case you hear some nasty rumors out there from your colleagues from the school districts.
They might contact you after they get elected to find out it's not like that.
Yeah, they might. Well, you know, I did take great pains to tell them that just because it works this way in Rhinebeck doesn't necessarily mean this is how it will work in your school district. And I said that very sincerely, I said, every board, every school district is different, and what works here doesn't work there. What this board wants out of a superintendent here is not necessarily what this board wants from a superintendent there. So take it all as very contextual comments and, you know, be lucky to be running for the Rhinebeck School Board, so.
Just wondering whether anybody at that meeting was contemplating running for a seat on Rhinebeck School?
No, no, there was nobody there from Rhinebeck. Wapingers, Weepertuck, Spack and Kill, at least one of the school districts that I recall, and nobody from Rhinebeck.
Okay, any other other? Just mention that I turned in my petition to run for school board tonight. I'm sure, I think Diane did as well, so.
That's good to hear.
Okay, so for that, we have two items. Is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay, we have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following, or the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2014-15 school year.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Andy Angelo, typist, for the purpose of retirement as stated effective the close of business on June 30th, 2015.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2014-15 school tax bills totaling $44,789.02 in reduction adjustments and to make appropriate refund to the property owner and upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the previous year's school tax bill refunding a total of $53,178.90 in reduction adjustments and to make an appropriate refund to the property owner from the district's tax sorcery
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to establish a step system for food service helpers based upon hourly rate and to designate the placement of current food service helpers on that step schedule to become effective April 1st, 2015, as attached.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Irina Jordan to commence about on April 14th, 2015, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave to the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid leave through sometime between May 12th, 2015 and May 26th, 2015, or thereabouts.
So moved.
By Deirdre?
Second.
By Lisa? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the proposed Rhinebeck Central School District 2015-16 school calendar.
So moved.
By Deirdre? By Deirdre.
Second.
By Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I actually, can we move to table this?
A motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
By Lisa. All those in favor of tabling the motion? That's unanimous, that motion passes.
It's tabled.
It's tabled. And we have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of contract negotiations.
So moved.
By Deirdre.
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes, we're moving into executive session.